We're reconvening our meeting.
Yep. I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education adopt the resolution approving the terms of the offer to buy real estate and acceptance and authorize the President and the Secretary to execute the offer on behalf of the Board to the Dream Center.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution approving the terms of the offer to buy real estate and acceptance and authorize the President and the Secretary to execute the offer on behalf of the Board to the Dream Center. Is there any discussion?
Just if we could have a little bit of a recap on where we are in the process.
With the Fulton property?
Yes.
And so with this, we are agreeing to the signed purchase agreement from the Dream Center to become the property owners of the Fulton property as of November 1. And so up to this point, we did a last walkthrough with some members from the Dream Center. That was October 13th, I believe. Prior to that, we had done a last walkthrough with our administrative team and made sure we got out everything that we still needed, that we could use in other buildings and things like that. And so it'll be ready to go as is to the Dream Center.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. So that brings us to a district strategic plan review, and we're going to hand it over to Superintendent Hawkins.
Good evening, everyone. We have a full house tonight. This is so exciting. So as you know, our process has been that the district has an overarching strategic plan, and then each year, we put together priority initiatives that really holds the district accountable to some of the things that we're working on to improve the student experience in the Dubuque Community School District. So tonight, our format's going to be a little bit different than we've done in the past. And so if you'll notice on our strategic plan, we have four pillars. We have student achievement and development. We have community engagement. We have effective resource management. And we have employee excellence. So when we start each of our pillars, we have a special guest that's going to come up to the microphone here and share their experience with one of our priority initiatives that they are currently involved in in our school district. So if it's okay, I'm going to start with pillar number one, student achievement and development, and we're going to skip down to priority initiative number four, and we're going to invite Carlos and his team up to the microphone to share their experience with Vertex.
This is Addie. Come on, Addie. Sit down right here. And Joel, you want to come on up too?
Of course.
So Addie and Joel are here from Hempstead and Senior, and they are taking employability skills right now. And they're going to talk to you a little bit about some of their experiences, and then we'll have Carlos come up and talk to you about his experience as a Vertex coach.
All right. So my name is Joel Hartman from Senior, and I job shadowed at Conklin Associates. So I started with the tour of the company. It was a very sleek, beautiful building with lots of different areas. Lauren, the human resource manager, showed us the office cubicles, the break room, and many other rooms that are used for a variety of different purposes. We started out with our first job shadow with Colin, who's told us about his job being a salesman and said he mostly does cold calls starting out, but later in his career, he will be traveling being a salesman. And then our next job shadow was with Quinn, who was a data analysis professional, who showed us different Excel spreadsheets about data from truck insurance that showed different companies' accidents and what caused them. He also set it up so the companies could focus on fixing the problem. I feel that these two are the most memorable job shadowing people that were there because they talked about things that I was interested. The rest of the employees, such as Brooke, Brittany, Liz, and Jason, talked about what they do in their departments. Overall, I was very surprised about the job shadowing experience. I never knew much about insurance. I always thought of it as extremely boring and adult industry. I was pleasantly surprised when they showed insurance to me as something that could be fun and something that I could be passionate about. I heard many times that you can travel to different places selling insurance, and you can do fun activities with different clients to build relationships with them, which I never thought was something that insurance was associated with. I also heard that at Conklin, when you meet a goal, the company offers some sort of reward for it. For example, a few years ago, the employees met a goal and won a full-paid trip to Vegas. I never would have thought that insurance would be associated with free trips and close client relationships. I feel like everyone should have the opportunity to take this class because it helps students find a career that they may be interested in. It's one thing to say you're interested in a career, but it's another to actually see firsthand how the job is done and say then you're interested in it. I feel like going on job shadows can take a lot of anxiety away because you actually see what goes on in the work environment. So it won't be a surprise when you start working there. You can also use job shadows to build professional relationships and meet people who are passionate about their career and can really give you a firsthand experience of what they do for the company. Overall, I believe that my job shadow at Conklin Associates opened my eyes to the insurance industry and gave me something to work towards in college.
Thank you. That's great. That's great.
My name is Addison Wright. I'm a sophomore at Hempstead High School. I have job shadowed two places. Both were very similar to his experiences. I've shadowed Splinter Law with Jamie Splinter. I actually got the opportunity to be in court with her, which was very fun, and I loved observing her. I got to firsthand see her do all of her inaction stuff with her court case and stuff. That was a lot of help to me because I am with this class. I am balancing or trying to figure out between two careers what I want to go to, and it has been very helpful. And my second job shadow was Unified Therapy. I shadowed Jasmine. She is an ortho physical therapist, and she helped me decide that I now want to go into physical therapy. So I'm very happy about this.
Awesome.
Through this class, I've done a ton of research, and these job shadows have been a major help to me because I have learned just communication skills, how to talk to people, how to help people, also what you need to know going into it. It's like basically practicing for your job and the communication with having now having contacts with them and knowing they both actually offered me a summer job to come in next summer. So that's very helpful to me to explore my future careers. So yes, I think this class is amazing, and these job shadows have helped me so much. So I'm just very thankful.
That's fantastic. Thanks so much for sharing your experiences. We appreciate that.
I think one of the things that we want to encourage to both of you is to continue to take those opportunities to explore the world, all right? Don't limit yourself. Continue to stretch. And help us to get your peers involved in those opportunities as well. There's a lot of jobs out there in the community, and we know employers are ready to get the next generation of leaders. So if you can help us out, to tap on your friends' shoulders and their friends, and work with Carlos and the team to get more students involved in these job shadow programs. So thank you guys for coming today.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't know how I'm going to top that, but I'll be quick. I'd like to thank Tom and Jennifer for showing up. These are one of my partners here. So again, I am Carlos Pittman. I am the Vertex Coach at Hempstead High School. Part of my job is, again, is to provide kids with job shadows, internships, field trips. We have career fairs. I have speakers that come on campus that I work with to talk with students about careers. So again, I do a lot of coaching as well. As we all know, kids, you know, sometimes they give you one-word answers, but I love the process of picking their brains. So you hit it on the head when you said, "Have kids explore." Okay? That's what this Vertex Initiative is, is having kids explore. Go out and see what you like. If you don't like it, then you come back, and we come back to the drawing board. So I can honestly say the Vertex Initiative has taken off. There's excitement in there. Like I said, kids are taking advantage. We got kids going on a fire station field trip tomorrow. We had a Future Finder event a couple of weeks ago, which was great.
That's fantastic.
We had families. Employers came and set up booths, and families were able to talk with them. So again, it has taken off. It's going to continue to take off, and we just encourage kids to explore, 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 and make sure by the time they graduate, they will have an experience before they leave.
Thank you, Carlos. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos actually invited me over to the Future Finders event, and I was able to speak with about 15 future educators that were interested in education and talk about that career path. So it was good to make those connections, for sure.
I just want to recognize the teachers of the employability skills class, Tom Sutton, Jennifer Gravel. They were here today. They came because they heard they didn't have to talk.
Yeah.
Doesn't look like it. He has a paper in his hand.
He has a speech right now, right, Tom?
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. So again, I'm trying to bring a couple of these to life. Each time that we meet, we'll bring in some different students or staff or community members so that you can hear from them. You know, you can hear it from me, but to actually hear it from those students, that's, you know, we can't replace that. So it sounds like they've had great experiences, and we appreciate that. So to continue on, and the first pillar was student achievement and development. Just as a quick recap, as you can see on the side, it shows the status update. And so the Vertex one, that one is under significant progress because obviously, we've made some great progress in this last year, and hopefully, we can get each and every student an experience like those students shared with us tonight. When we talk about increased student connections to extracurricular activities and culturally relevant activities, we're saying that we're making steady progress on that. Right now, Joe Maloney and De'Er Littleton are working on Black Student Unions at both of the high schools with a goal of launching that here in the mid-school year. And then we're currently taking inventory of everything that we have and asking questions, doing surveys with students to find out what things they would like to have in addition to that would get them involved in our schools, especially at the high school level.
Amy, is a Black Student Union a place or a group?
Do you want to come up and talk about that? Yeah?
It is not a place, but it's a group, right? And so all, both high schools, as well as the ALC, have those opportunities, and it's just a place like our Pacific Islander and Marshall East Club where students can convene, talk about things that they want to do, and give them that affinity space to really be intentional about what their co-curricular experience looks like outside of the classroom and how we're tying that back to the curricular experience to make meaningful connections when we talk about inclusion and belonging.
Thank you.
Thanks, De'Er. If we look at priority initiative number two, that one again is making steady progress. And this one's really about the partnerships that we're making around early childhood programming around the community. So Lisa and her team have been working really hard. They're meeting monthly and working with community stakeholders to see what opportunities are out there to expand our early childhood and some of our childcare centers that we know are in need in this community. They're looking at exploring innovative ways to deliver childcare or early childhood education, and how do we meet all those community needs in the different areas that where those possibilities could land. The other thing that they're planning to do is to take a visit to the Owine Community School District because they have already developed a collaboration with a lot of groups in their community, and so they're going there to see what that looks like and how that process got started and how we could maybe bring some of those ideas back here to Dubuque. So thank you, Lisa and your team, for that. The third one is that we're providing professional development to increase the sense of belonging in the classroom and to really focus on that optimal learning environment. And so we're making steady progress because, as you know, we did have professional learning sessions at the beginning of the school year, and we had one here in October, and we'll continue to have those throughout the school year. But during that time, the secondary group had a symposium, and they offered 89 sessions which focused around the optimal learning environment and the MTSS system. And so that, we've gotten lots of feedback from that, and people really felt that was well-received and felt like that was one of the better professional developments that they've had here in the district over time. So another thing we're working on is intercultural communication professional learning that De'Er and his team are working with each of the schools to take them through a progression throughout the school year. The last, or in the elementary world, they're working on differentiation professional learning. And then also, right now, going through an Elevate training to address the optimal learning environment in the elementary setting. So I don't know, Lisa, do you want to talk about that at all?
So right now, for Elevate training, all of our elementary EST teachers on special assignment, we're all participating in this together, and that is helping us as we frame up professional learning that we are then pushing out into the schools. And so this just gives us an opportunity to embed optimal learning environment with what we're doing, whether it's our new reading curricular area or whether it's math, whatever the case may be, from the standpoint of that that optimal learning environment should be embedded in everything we do. And then differentiation is something that also is a piece of every PD that we roll out district-wide, and in there, we're giving teachers strategies to create that optimal learning environment, but also to do the MTSS structures that meet student needs.
Thank you. If we go to priority initiative number five, that one again is making steady progress. And so that's really support furthering each school's multi-tiered system of support or the MTSS system as outlined in their school plans, which includes academics, attendance, and social emotional behavior health. And so again, the secondary symposium provided professional learning on the MTSS system. Some secondary schools attended the professional learning communities, which are, we call them PLCs. So they attended a conference in Des Moines in September. All elementary schools are currently using the Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavior Risk Screener, which we call SABERS. And then they've introduced Second Step, which is our social emotional learning curriculum in all of our elementary schools. So all of our elementary schools are using the same language, the same curriculum, and so it's been universal in all 12 of our elementary schools. Another thing that we've done this year is we've introduced a new English Language Arts curriculum. And so I don't know if Tammy De'Er wants to give us an update on how HMH is going, but that's been, you know, as we know, that's a big piece of our students' day. And so there's been lots of learning and some positive changes that have happened with the new ELA curriculum that we've adopted. So I appreciate all their work to get that up and going. And then, as Lisa talked about, that differentiation professional learning, that's really embedded into each of our district-led professional development sessions, and it's really how do we work to meet all the students' needs and meet the students where they're at. So thank you for your work on all of that.
Amy, I hear you saying that the elementary has common language, common protocols. Do you see the secondaries in that same common language, common protocols?
Yeah. So our middle schools, they are using seven mindsets. And so that one is that same format. And then high schools, they are working this year with Mimi to adopt the curriculum that they will use, utilize, that they'll use.
Okay. Thank you.
Number six, this one is having some progress, and really, this is about like reviewing and possibly modifying graduation requirements in our district. And so Mark Burns has put together a team of high school teachers and administrators and many administrators from here at the district office as well, and they're really reviewing our graduation requirements and then looking at comparing those to the other UEN's graduation requirements and those that are in the Mississippi Valley Conference. So they've had one meeting so far, but really, just getting everybody on the same page to the why we're looking at this. Don't know if we're going to have change by the end of it, but really trying to make sure that we are, you know, doing best by our students moving forward. So Mark, I don't know if you have any progress on that, if you want to talk about that at all?
Like Amy said, we've had one meeting. We looked at our data. We looked deeply at our data. Next meeting, when we gather, we'll use the same protocols that we used to look at our data. We'll look at the data of the other UEN schools. In the future meetings, we'll look at the schedules that schools have, so the opportunities that students have to earn credit, how many credits are required for a diploma, whether or not a school district has a core diploma, which is a little bit lower requirement, and a standard diploma, things like that. And then we'll bring forward, probably after our February meeting, we'll bring forward what our findings are, a problem of practice, and potential solution for you.
They say things in education go slow. I'm so glad to hear this. I've only been talking about this for 11 years. I will take a look at this and make sure that we're looking at our requirements compared to the others and not just doing what we've always done because I know we were very heavy. I know we've added on, we've adjusted, but this comprehensive look, thank you.
No district does it the same.
I understand that. And it's got to be what works for us, but at least we're looking at it to see where we can modify if we need to. And I, thank you.
I have a question about, we had students give a presentation, which they did a wonderful job. So where does this Vertex program fit in their course graduation requirements?
So it would be an applied learning credit. Yep. It would be an applied learning credit. So they'll take that employability skills class if it's there. If they take the internship class, then it would be an additional credit. They need 13 or 14 credits of electives. Some of them are directed by us, and some of them are on their own, so it could fit into those. Thank you.
How many students are involved in Vertex, Mark? You're not saying that's everybody?
I couldn't, I couldn't put a number on it. I could tell you how many students are in a particular class, but the Vertex coaches. So Carlos is worrying about every student. So he's looking at a data dashboard that tells him where student interests are, and then he is trying to align those interests to opportunities as they come up and then personally invite students to come and be a part of those opportunities. And that's one of the things that happened at the Future Finder event. We had over 100 students there. Our teachers reached out and personally invited the students to come to that event, and they did with their families, and they ate all the pizza and listened to all the speakers and learned a lot of good things about what the opportunities are in town. And like Joel said, students don't realize what is available or what insurance looks like. They've got pictures of things in their heads, and this helps to clarify that so they can see that there are really great jobs that are here in Dubuque available to them. So if they go away to school, and they, you know, they can come back and they can find a really great job.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, if you're not finished.
Just, are we talking 20 kids, 200? I'm not talking for a finite number, but is that a small starter set now? Or is...
In the employability skills class, there are about 14 kids in each school. I think, I think that's where the enrollment is.
Okay.
We expect it to grow. In the internship class, it's less than 14 because we want them to take employability skills and then the internship class. But, so there are less than. But then, in Vertex, it's all of the concurrent coursework, all of the AP coursework, and we know we're up 188% over last year in the number of students that are enrolled in those college readiness courses. So we're excited about that.
That's great. Thank you.
I was going to say, on the flip side, employers are having trouble finding workers. So listening to these two, how impressed they were with all the visits. You know, I know some things, some visits or areas were more impressive to them than others, but if an employer could hear that, they're going to want to take more part in this and invite these young people.
Yeah. Maybe one did tonight, or back behind me, there might be somebody. I don't know.
You know, we got to tap into these kids when they're still in high school, whether they go on to post-secondary education or go right into the workforce. And Dubuque, we need to grow, so it's just a win-win. So how are these employers, are they calling into the district to say, "Hey, we want to be part of this," or are we reaching out to...
Yes, both. Some are calling in. Got a call just a week ago from, from a company that wants to bring kids through their factory, and then we've gone out and done visits and talked to them about what we're doing with students and tried to get companies interested in having us bring students by for a tour or do a job shadow or do internships. So yeah.
Yeah, because no one's going to understand a job unless they're into, go in the workplace, like insurance. You know, it's the last thing I want to do. But if you go in and visit a company and really hear how, he was so impressed with it, so that's great.
You know, the Vertex program is something I hear a lot about within the community and how employers want to support this program. And one of the additional opportunities we have is tap into those students that are, for whatever reason, they don't feel connected, right? So these culturally relevant groups, you know, I hope there's a direct connection working with De'Er and Mark where we tap into the Marshallese community, the Black Student Union groups, and whatever other group that we develop in the organization to also see Vertex as a career opportunity, right? And so it's really about connecting those programs and systems to make sure when we say all students have those opportunities, it's truly all students. I know you guys are doing that, but I do want to make sure that is something that you guys are, you know, trying to do.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, Black Student Union, one of the things they're talking about is talking to the local colleges that have one and having them come in and help us out a little bit with getting it started or get kids, you know, continue to build the interest in it so that students realize what the potential is.
Great. I know there's a little flexibility involved, and you mentioned the applied learning credit that students are receiving. I'm hoping that when we do undergo our study with the other districts, that we have, that we allow for flexibility because as a high school student, it's been my experience, they're very concerned with getting their required credits that are in the books out of the way. And so sometimes, it just don't seem like they have time or room in their schedule to take on some of these wonderful programs. So I hope there is more flexibility down the road here for our high school students.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So number seven, computer science. So we're looking at finalizing a pre-K to 12 computer science guiding philosophy and then new computer science opportunities at all levels. And so some things that Julie and her team have been working on is, number one, a state required vision statement, and that's been submitted and accepted to the department event. We actually had a group here that was, that was here last Tuesday, I believe, for your presentation to the state. So they did a great job. We're looking at adding coding to the third grade curriculum and then also exploring AP computer science principles at the high school for an additional offering. So Julie, did you have anything to say about that? Are we, did I cover it good? Yeah? Okay. Awesome.
This is awesome, just before you move on, that you're saying pre-K to 12th grade computer science. You know, these kids, before they can talk, they're working with devices.
Absolutely. Yeah.
So this is awesome. We tap into them when they're really young.
Yeah. They already know a lot of more things, more things than we do, don't they?
Oh, yeah.
I wish Ms. Lang would have came and talked about, you know, a few days ago, I happened to have the opportunity to serve on the State Board for the STEM advisory, and they were in awe and wow with the work that we are doing here in Dubuque, not only with making sure that STEM is connected throughout the district, but also infusing equity and all the different partnerships with teachers and parents. And so I know for sure they left and was like, "Wow, how can we do that?" I'm like, "Well, you don't have great staff like we do."
Yeah.
Kudos to all those who, it was an entire team here doing that. So I do want to publicly thank them for what they did.
Thanks, Anderson. And number eight, the last one on this pillar, is to enhance, promote, and streamline reporting around bullying and harassment. So Mimi Holst and her team have been working really hard to make sure, one, that every building has an administrator trained, that they can take care of the investigations around bullying and harassment. The district has just put out a Say Something webpage, which has really kind of strummed up some interest, right? But that's a good thing because kids are noticing it, and they know that there's a place that they can, if they, if they see something, they need to say something. So we appreciate that. There was a bullying lesson that was conducted in all of the secondaries in the month of October through their advisory time period. And then a Second Step Bullying Prevention Unit is also being taught at the elementary schools during, it's going to be piloted at two of our elementary schools. elementary schools during, it's going to be piloted at two of our elementary schools this year. So Mimi and her team have been working really hard to get some awareness around this, and the opportunities for students to report things when they have an issue. So I appreciate your work on that. So the next one we're going to move to is community engagement. And again, I'm going to pull forward our guests from the audience. So Jason Weston, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and introducing yourself, and telling us about, we're looking at priority initiative number 10 with Jason.
Okay, let me start my time, just to keep me honest on time. So, again, Jason Weston, I've been mentoring in the district for about four years now. So I want to kind of talk about mentoring in two, kind of two pods here, group as well as individual one-on-one. So part of the Dubuque Black Men's Coalition, which I work with Anderson and some other men that were in this, in this room, I'm the, kind of the lead on our mentoring initiative. So we have groups that meet in Hampstead Senior, and as well as Prescott. I specifically work with the Dubuque Senior and the Prescott groups. So what we do is, for example, at Dubuque Senior, we meet once a month, and we have about 15 young men. So we get together, the, the session looks, we're sitting like in a room just like this, we all check in, you know, Jason, what's new, what's new exciting, what's on your mind? And we go around the room, mentors and mentees, and just kind of check in. And then after that, especially at the high school level, we see what's on their mind, what they want to talk about. And usually it's always something, a hot button issue that's going on in the school, going on in the news, that they want to discuss. And so, so we, we always have something we wanted to speak with them about, but as a plan B, but they always have something to discuss. And part of this kind of group, we, you know, part of our Dubuque Black Men's Coalition, we take them on their first college visit. We have our manhood project, you know, because most of the mentors, or, yeah, most of the mentors are professionals, we want to make sure, and again, we specifically target young black men, because we want to provide them, you know, a positive, safe space where they can be themselves and kind of talk to any issues they have in life. So, so that's that group. And if you have any questions on that, I'm trying to stay true to time. And then the one-on-ones, I also do one-on-one mentoring at Lincoln and Marshall. And that session is kind of, you know, just working with the district, working with the counselors coming in, and paired with, you know, one individual young man that I see bi-weekly, and kind of, kind of come in, check in, basically whatever the date fits for that young, that young man, we do. Either it's going outside, playing gym, playing some games, or just talking. And usually during that interaction, it allows me to kind of check in with them, see what's going on, if they have any issues, anything I can help out with. So, you know, what I get out of all this, and, and it's really just making a difference, you know. I've been blessed in my life, and, you know, a lot of these young men, they, they come from two-parent households. They're not, what typically you think for, you know, a child that needs a mentor, they usually come from a, you know, a whole family, mother and father works, but just have an outlet that they can ask questions, or get a perspective from somebody else. So, yeah, I mean, and that's, that's kind of, if I can get anything out of that, is, is provide one thing to that child that they can take on and be successful and great in life. Yeah, so, any questions?
Well, not.
I'll go ahead, Anderson.
Oh, no, you know, my wife does not play that, so you go ahead and go.
I was just going to say, I just recently learned about the mentor program that we have here, and it was very inspiring to hear about that. And you're very inspiring to listen to and really admire the work that you're doing with these kids. So, thank you.
It was a reality check for me, is because, you know, obviously, we had our summer break, and, you know, I've, I've, there was one kid, he's at Marshall, met all, all last year, and some, I just forgot to tell him, hey, summer's here, and won't see you until September, or, you know, September. But when I first, when I first went there this year, he did, he was apprehensive about meeting. I was like, you know, what's going on? What's the problem? And he, and he asked me, did you quit me? And I was like, no, I didn't. I ain't quit you, it was the summer. So, so just that simple knows that it's important to that young, young man, that, that we're, we're there, we're, whatever it is, whatever that void is filling his life, I'm there to help.
Well, the scary part is when I made that comment about my boss, my wife, everyone looked at me and started shaking their head and laughing. So that's a scary thing in here. Jason, I want to tee up something Nancy mentioned a while back, and an encouragement to the community, when you shared that we want all of our community members, in a structured way, to come in into our school buildings and mentor, right? That was like a direct ask. And so I know there's a lot of people potentially watching. We want you in our organization, because every kid deserves a mentor, and even the teachers, you know, they deserve a supporting person to listen, talk with. And so that was a direct request from you.
One of the things, somebody watching this may wonder if they wanted to do that, how would they go about it? Any advice on that to the community?
Yeah, they would, they would go through Shirley Horstman. And so Shirley, is there a spot on our website that they can go to?
Yes, there is. There's a form on the website, if they go to our DubuqueCommunitySchool.org site, and then just go to the search bar and search student mentoring.
Student mentoring.
Yeah, so search bar, student mentoring, and there'll be a form that you can fill out. So, thanks for that, Shirley.
Jason, I have a question. You mentioned your specific group is young black men. Is there groups of other kids that, you know, I know there's one-on-one mentoring with a lot of different kids, but is there any specific groups for, for girls, for, you know, different?
We have a lot of business and organizations that are coming in and mentoring at all of our schools. And so John Dear is one of our big mentors. Cottingham Butler has just picked up a big mentorship for us. So they're working on going into organizations, asking them if they want to be mentors, and then getting that arranged for them as well.
That's how I started my one-on-one mentoring is, was through Prudential, which now is Empower. So I started off, that was how my one-on-one connection with Marshall was. And then I believe the counselor was speaking about the great job, I forget how it went. But then the Lincoln counselor reached out and said, hey, I mean, you, you have time. I got another kid that could benefit. So then I just branched out. And since then, and since COVID, I know specifically my organization kind of fell apart, but I continue to, those connections and relationship I had, I continued, and the counselors continue to let me just come in and, and be involved.
Jason, are we still saying about a half hour a week with a child? I'm just, again, thinking of people who might be interested.
Yeah, I mean, I think that half hour a week is probably the best. I, me specifically, I, I kind of, because of my work schedule, I try to do 45 minutes bi-weekly, 40 minutes, 45 minutes to an hour. So councils are flexible in those regards.
Just so people don't think, oh, I have to have a half day available. No.
Right. I'm usually in and out quickly.
Thanks for coming and sharing. I think it's helpful for the community and just us to remember, like, we can do this again. You know, it's been two years where it's been so wonky because COVID. We need kind of a shakeup that we can come back.
Perfect, perfect. All right.
Thanks, Jason. I appreciate you. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.
No problem.
You know, and I think, one of the questions that Lisa was referring to, I know, and there's the, you've got the Black Men's Coalition that come in and mentor a group of kids. Are we doing anything for, like, the, the black girls in the, in the black women in the community? The Marshallese, do they have a community of mentors like that? Are we building on just that? Or is that something, is that a group that's outside of the district that comes in and does it? How do, how do we understand that, how we can maybe build on that?
Yeah.
Because it's successful. Yeah.
If it's okay, you know, can I invite De'Aaron to come in? Because I know he has some hard thoughts on that, different ways you are building.
Hello. Do you understand my question, how we can build on that, on the example of the?
Yeah, and I think what we're doing as a district is really just trying to understand where our areas of opportunities are for our subgroups and underrepresented groups, and how do we meet those needs outside of the classrooms? We know representation is so important. We know that belonging piece is so important. And so we're trying to be strategic in how we're doing evidence-based things to meet those needs. And so I think, while it doesn't give you a specific example, it's saying that we're addressing those things to find innovative ways to incorporate those, whether it's in the curricular or the co-curricular experience.
Right.
Can I ask you, just to tee up on that too? So the Pacific Islander program, that's also specifically for, I'm assuming, students who are in the Marshallese community. But is there mentors or people from that community who also attend that to support our students or help guide anything?
That would be specific to the high school. And so those advisors of that specific high school organization would have the answers to that.
Okay. But I hope there's enough.
Everybody's welcome to come to those, those meetings, or those, I know, you know, they, they were just in the homecoming parade, and some of those things, that they can participate in some of those events. Right now, those are led by our, a lot of our ELL staff in the schools.
Yeah. And if I can add one thing, what we were doing is trying to work more closely with some of those underrepresented groups through community events, to see how we can take what they're doing and be a partner in that, to build a nexus between the district and the community. So that's.
And that's good. I'm not saying you have to do it the exact same way. And that's what I appreciate, your ability to go out and see what that need is. It might not be the same thing, but I'm sure there is some sort of a need. From what I'm hearing, there is, there are some groups that need some good adult mentoring that aren't just teachers. And, and whether it is adults within their own community, or other adults, you know, however that is, I think, I really hope we're building on that sooner rather than later, because it, because sometimes it's easier to get together in a small group, as the kids get older, if they don't want to do the one-on-one mentoring type of thing.
And to your point, mentoring is so important. Mark used something earlier when he talked about mentors, that I thought was profound, and I can't remember what he said.
He thought it was great.
Essentially, it was just acknowledging the power of mentors, and how mentors are really doing the necessary work to meet our families and students where they are, to give them what they need, when they need it, in order to be successful. So.
Thank you. Thank you for your work and checking that out.
I think it's safe to say that there are so many children in every school, whatever their subgroup or classification, that need a caring adult in their lives. And a person doesn't need to hang back from stepping into that based on their comfort or experience or whatever, that caring about a child is a pretty easy thing to do. But it, that regularity of contact is so critical.
I would agree.
Yeah, the relationship really matters, you know, that relationship and connection. As he said in the summertime, he was wondering, you know, where'd it go. So that does matter. So thanks to Jason. So back up to community engagement. On number nine, we're making steady progress. We developed a parent organizational network, a PTO, that's district-wide. And so Mike Siz has, has headed up this priority, and he had his first meeting. And after the meeting, he came out of there and said, I need more of those meetings. That was like the best meeting I've ever had. A lot of really excited people that are involved in each of our other schools, and working to try to help each other be better in their organization. I mean, they talked about, they wanted to meet every week. And so I think Mike talked them into bi-weekly, that they want to meet, and they met via teams, but really talked about, how do they share resources? You know, instead of everybody trying to find and do the same things, how do we have, you know, different Excel spreadsheets to share resources, share ideas? What are things you're doing during teacher appreciation weeks, and ways to engage families, and things you're doing for your kids? So I think that's been exciting. So maybe next month, somebody will come and share the progress that they have made. But Meg, thanks for your work on that, for sure. Number 10, that was steady progress. That's what Jason just spoke to us about. Number 11, we're making significant progress. And this is really just about reconnecting and re-engaging families to their school communities. We know that during COVID, you know, we just, we weren't able to engage families into the process of school, into, into what, what happens on a daily basis in school, and how we know that that, that engagement from families helps us with attendance and achievement and behavior, and all those things that go into it. So some things that we've done to help with that re-engagement and reconnecting is just our partnership with the Juul. You know, we've done some great things. The Juul's kind of helped us with some routes to help students get to school, and families get to events and things. We've had orientation, open houses. We've had lots of activities to re-engage families. I told Ed I was going to do a plug for him tonight. He's got a luncheon learn on, on November 16th, where he's inviting families to come in, have lunch with their students, learn about all the things that their kids are doing throughout the school year, and just to try to get people engaged at different times of the day. So, so there's a lot of things going on in each of our individual schools. And then another thing that Lisa and her team have really helped is to provide for for-school care. And so we've got that right now in nine of our 12 buildings, and that has really come from a partnership from a lot of people across the district. And so we appreciate that, and our families appreciate that as well. The next initiative is number 12, and it's about the Achieve Portal for Special Education. And so this is making some progress. And so the sum comes from what we have done so far with our teaching staff. You know, we did a lot of training. Brenda and her team kicked off this big Achieve campaign with T-shirts and, and stickers, and all sorts of engaging activities, to really get our staff on board to what this new platform looks like for our IEP system. The piece that we're waiting on is the parent piece of that. And so the state is still working on how they're going to release, does that, does that sound okay? The parent portal system of Achieve. And so Brenda and her team are working right now to work on plans to how we're going to train parents to use that system as well, so that they can be engaged in the, in the special education IEP process with those teachers and staff. So I appreciate Brenda and her team's work on that. Okay, the next pillar is effective resource management. And if it's okay, I'll skip up to number 16, and I'll invite our special guest, Eric Johnson, who is the principal of Sageville Elementary School. And so as you know, this priority is around the district cybersecurity efforts. Colby's number one passion these days, isn't it, Colby?
Do you want to come up?
Yeah, thanks, Eric.
Okay. First, thanks for inviting me tonight. The mentoring program that you guys just saw is awesome. At Sageville, we have seven, and we would love more. So there's my recruiting push. 25 minutes during lunch, once a week, if anybody's out there that wants it. So I am here to talk about cybersecurity and what we're doing at Sageville. I'm happy to report that Kobe's efforts aren't under, are unappreciated at Sageville. This year, after reviewing data over summer, we saw that Sageville, my building, had a higher click rate on the test links that get sent. And then completing the training videos that are sent monthly as well was lower. So we made that a priority at our school. And on the first day, April 15th, we started with Amy down at the Grand River Center with all of our staff, and then ended it with Kobe at Sageville to review best practices. So at, at that training, at that initial one, Kobe talked about the safety protocols the district has in place, something as simple as reading the external sender bar on our emails, which now we may be a little too quick to read that and click and delete. Always just explore that, so we have to walk that one back a little. From that, going over to the multi-factor authentication that we're doing too. So including reminders each week in our staff emails, and at staff meetings and professional development about it, is key, is, I think the, the big picture is just keeping this as part of our conversation, that it's important. We see more and more places in the news struggling with this. And so after Kobe's training on the 15th, and the refreshers that I continually share and send each week, I've had paras and teachers come up and just say, thanks for the reminder. Or they're happy to say, like, ooh, I clicked the fishing one and saw that we got it marked and reported and everything. So the staff at Sageville's not made it a competition, but they're. but they're happily doing their part to actively report and, and keep our data safe, which I think goes into the final part. Doing what's best for kids also means keeping their data safe and keeping our family's data safe and our system safe so we can use technology and everything. And so while it doesn't seem to be something that we actively always do, just those reminders and letting our staff know that it's something that is important has helped them stay alert and active in that as well. I talked, I have an anniversary dinner that I'm not going to be late to.
Thank you, Eric.
If we talked about wives, I don't know.
We'll just say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Eric, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah. If you can see on your list, that says that we've had significant progress. And I think Kobe would say, we're never going to have that completed because we constantly have to be updating and keeping eye on things. And educating our staff. And so we appreciate that Kobe's been very willing to go into schools. Staff have been, you know, asking lots of questions from Kobe and a lot of principals have been inviting him in for those conversations. So we appreciate everything that you're doing to keep our, keep us safe in that cyber world. So thanks, Kobe. Yeah. So when we talk about effective resource management, looking at number 13, there's been significant process in the two middle school model. And so I know we've had conversations about that with Envisions, is the architect firm that we've hired. And so they are really working with our community task force team, which, you know, Anderson and Lisa sit on that, that team as well, which we meet monthly. But they've also done a really good job of engaging focus groups from throughout the community, whether it be parents, teachers, community leaders, students, in that conversation around what could this possibly look like? And so the plan for Envisions is that they would have a recommendation to the board by the end of the school year about a location and site for, for the new middle school. So. Number 14 is to explore the feasibility of a learning management system for the elementary level. And so Kobe and, and Julie have been looking at, what does this look like for one-to-one and a learning management system? As you know, we use Canvas, a learning management system at the secondary, and we are one-to-one in our six through 12. And so this year, they're really just seeing, what does it look like if we go to the elementary? What, what are the direct and indirect factors as we look at this? And what are the age-appropriate learning management systems that are out there that we need to look at and see if that would work for our school district? So their efforts are moving forward. And so they've made some progress on that, and there'll be more to come, hopefully, in February on that piece. And then the last one in effective resource management is around our financial targets. And as you know, that's a big piece for Kevin. And Kevin Kelleher and his team do a great job of keeping us up to date on where we are financially. One of the things that, you know, this time of year, that's important for us to look at is our certified enrollment. And so that'll be official here at the beginning of November. And so it looks like we're going to have another slight decline in enrollment this year, maybe around 56 students, which is a little bit less than we had anticipated, which is always a good thing. But those are things that Kevin and his team are constantly monitoring and reviewing and bringing those updates to you as the board. And so that we can really work on what do we, the best decisions that we can make for kids, but the financial pieces that go along with that in the district.
I think that's another reason why we're having conversations about the middle school, right?
Absolutely.
And as we talk to Envision, they talk about, especially for the residents of Dubuque, is to understand with the why, so start off with the why. So when you have low numbers and you have low state funding coming in, for us, there's opportunities for us to consider ways to be efficient long-term, where you don't have to think about some dramatic cuts. And so we're looking at all the possibilities to be more efficient so that way we can do what's best for our students. But this one right here is a direct connection on why we're having certain conversations.
Absolutely. And I would invite the community, we have our next middle school, community-wide meeting is next Tuesday, November 1st. And that's at 5:30 here in the boardroom. So everyone's all invited to attend. So thank you. So our last pillar that we need, that we're going to talk about tonight is employee excellence. And so I'm going to skip up to number 19, and I'm going to invite Holly Richard up to the mic. So Holly.
Good evening. I'm Holly Richards, and I'm a multi-cat early childhood teacher at Irving. To start, I'm going to give you just a little bit of information about myself and my family over the last 27 months that will paint a better picture for you. My family and I moved to Dubuque County from Southern Illinois in July of 2020, a very crazy time. When we got here, my husband's work life was very planned out, but mine, not so much. My undergrad is in Child and Brain Development. And in Illinois, I worked for Early Intervention as a developmental therapist. Early intervention looks very different here in Iowa. It's known as early access, and it's run through AEs with special education teachers. Finding this information out was a huge blow to me, as young children are my passion. I picked myself up and decided this life change would not define me, and I would go after my master's degree in special education. In August of 2020, I accepted a pair of professional position at Carver Elementary and began my master's degree. I worked endlessly, and by August of 2020, or August of 2021, I was student teaching at Table Mound in their structured teach program. If you're doing the math, I completed my master's coursework in 13 months. And to this day, I really can't tell you how I did that. In January of '22, I began as a full-time substitute at Table Mound in Hoover. This year, '22, '23, I began my first official teaching position with Irving Elementary, two days late because COVID. All that to say, completing all these steps within the Dubuque Community School District has been one of the greatest experiences of my life. In three years, I have gotten to experience five Dubuque elementary buildings and one junior high. I think I forgot to mention, I did do ESY and returned to routine somewhere in there at Washington and Eisenhower. I have met countless people, some of which are now my very best friends. There are educators all over the district that I can reach out to for help or support at any given time. Each school year has challenges, as we all know, some years more than others. Without the knowledge I gained during my student teaching experience and then subbing in the district, I do not believe I could confidently say that right now, today, I am doing okay as an educator. I'm sure my Irving team would say I'm doing much better than okay. Every single day has some sort of pondering or problem solving to be done. But knowing that I have the support of the teachers, educational coaches, and principals from all of the, over the district, make me rate my experience with the Dubuque Community School District as one of the best. I can say that I am doing what's best for kids because of the experiences that I had during student teaching and then subbing and learning some of those foundational skills. Like, those were done before the classroom was solely my responsibility. So that was very beneficial, traveling through different buildings, meeting different people, seeing how different buildings operate and different principals operate. And that has really made making my students' days meaningful. And that gets me where I need to be too.
I just wanted to say, Holly, I got to see you in action on Picture Day, which brought about a lot of challenges for you. And myself, because I volunteered. And you did an amazing job. Those kids are very lucky to have you. And you guys all work very well together, so.
I, I have a great team, and I have to say I have one of the most supportive principals I've ever had. She's told me regularly over the last eight to 10 weeks how appreciative she is of me. And that takes you a really long way. When you feel like the world might be crumbling, it's not.
Yes, it's important work. Good job.
Well, Holly, I really appreciate you coming here tonight. And, you know, we've had a little bit of a connection because I was in the HR world. And so moving from paraprofessional to getting your degree in student teaching and hiring you as a building sub, I'm so happy we could find you a job in the district.
And you're saying, you know, I don't, I don't think going to be a paro right now with a master's degree is probably what you should be doing.
Yeah, well, we appreciate you and thank you. And so that really speaks to number 19, when we talk about, you know, our grow our own, you know, and how do we continue to tap people on the shoulder that have the experiences and that we can get into, you know, different jobs that help our kids? So we really appreciate Holly and everything she's done for the district, so thank you.
I've always said subbing is the greatest experience you can ever have before you're a teacher because you do get to experience different classrooms. In fact, I've always said it should be mandatory out of, out of college that you sub. You have to go and sub for a district, because then you learn, each of the different building, you learn from the teachers that are there, and you learn classroom management on the spot.
Absolutely.
But I think it's great, that experience that she shared with her subbing to see how things work in other classrooms. You learn what works for you and what doesn't work for you. So that's great to see that.
And the most important part is you make the best resources.
Yeah.
Some of my best friends here in the community, now that we've been here for 27 months, are people that I've met in Dubuque schools.
That's great.
That's something.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that.
So if you're looking for a best friend, come work for the district.
Yeah, there you go. That's the message, right?
Friend for life, be a perv.
And then to finish out the employee excellence, we'll talk about number 17, and that's made some progress. And it's about developing staff retention plan that explores incentives, incentive, systems of care, and enhanced staff recognition programs. And so Brian and his team are exploring different companies that actually come in, and they complete an analysis of job titles, current positions, and compensations. And also others from the UEN, the Urban Education Network, are doing the same. So I've been on some email strands that they're working together to see how they can compare some things and, and get things moving forward. So I appreciate your work on that, Brian. And then the last one is to enhance staff recruitment efforts with a focus on generating a more diverse applicant pool for opening positions. And the one thing the district has done is we created a new human resources and equity specialist position. And so that position is being run out of the Human Resource Office in collaboration with Deere. And so really looking at, how do we go out and recruit staff? The one story I'd like to share, and I think I'm okay to share it, but one of the first tasks that they gave Jay in her new position was, we, we're short bus drivers. How can we get five new bus drivers before Christmas break? So she is a worker bee, and she got after it. She, she's called Hirschback, Hirschback Postal Services. Brian, maybe you should talk about this instead of me.
Amazon, UPS. She went to like five or six of the local places. And what she's finding out is that there's a lot of employees that are working there that are part-time that may be interesting. If we can fill our, our relief driver pool, that does so much for our drivers to know that they're not constantly stuck to picking up every other route that's left out there. So that's a, a big step for us, and, and Joanne's done a great job with that. So the work that she does, we're very appreciative of, so.
And then another piece is, they're enhancing their efforts with the HBCUs. So the historically black colleges and universities, and going to be going to some job fairs and trying to make some connections with some different individuals that are looking at going into teaching and possibly moving to the state of Iowa. So I appreciate your efforts on that. So that really summarizes our 19 priority initiatives for the '22, '23 school year. So I really appreciate people coming here and giving you some live experiences because I think that's really beneficial because they're, you know, we, we can see that we're making some progress, which is exciting. And we have great people in our schools, helping our students have a great experience while they're in the Dubuque Community School District. So I appreciate our team for all the work you're doing to accomplish these goals, you know, by the end of the school year. But it's really our staff and our buildings and our community that are helping us achieve these as well. So thanks, everybody. And is there any other questions or anything?
I just want to say thank you, Amy, for bringing in the part of your team here to speak to us. Makes it so much more down-to-earth and, I don't know, it just makes more to it when we're somebody that's in the field.
Yeah, nobody wants to listen to me all the time.
Save on your voice, and you're delegating your responsibility, which, which you should. And I enjoyed the visiting from all of you that came up here tonight. Most of them have left. Responsibilities, but thank you for all that came up here and presented.
Yeah, thank you for the new twist. You told us there was a surprise.
Try something new, yes.
It was so energizing to listen to this presentation as the last strategic plan was with the employee excellence. There's nothing better than giving kudos to someone, and that's what we want to give to you. That is great.
I think it's helpful, we can point to like actual examples when we're talking in the community with folks, what we're doing. We met people who are living out our plan, and that's fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the only thing that I would add, you know, is just that you do have an amazing team. And it's very, it's amazing to hear you acknowledge them like you do. You know, and it's something we heard from Stan, and it's something that I've watched you. You don't put the credit on yourself, you throw it back on your team. And so I really appreciate that in you and let your team know that we're thankful for the work that they do every single day.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Any other items, board members?
Do we break time?
Well, we are adjourned.
Thank you so much.